David and Kathy are friendly greeters. Would one of you two like the latest in the Flag Salute?
Sure, if you'd like to be holding our flag.
To the light of the United States of America. The true republic for which it stands. One nation, one God. In his will, liberty and justice for all.
All right, you have to say hi and how are you to your neighbors and friends? Hi to everybody on Zoom there. I can wait for those folks. Well, happy Thursday, everybody. Welcome to the April 7th Rotary Club of Newport High School meeting. So glad to see you all getting more and more in person. And still have good following on Zoom, so happy about that. So Kathy, do we have any visiting Rotarians?
We certainly do. We have Bermin Hornet, who is, everybody knows Bermin, but she is now a member of Fun Shop, which I don't know whether that pick you or. And her lovely daughter Casey Wood, who is from Tennessee, Washington, and baby Joy, who has apparently perfect my technique.
All right, any visiting Rotarians on Zoom? Looks like Candy out there. There's Candy. Hi Candy, how are you doing? Welcome.
Really good, thanks. Good to be here.
How about guests? Any guests? Let's start at the back table there, or at Raina's table. Let's start there.
So I have, it goes to one, Eli Crowder, Champagne, and then I have Christian here, and she is from Newport, New York.
Yes, Donna Gray, mostly Ellen, and she's a regular, you know, and we're hoping you'll.
Flag Sale.
Next through the door. And here we've got our guests. They'll get introduced here in a moment, so hang out here. How about Keith's table? Any guests there?
My guest, my sponsor's not here today. I'm pretty far.
Shall we find David, since he's not here? Your first official. All right, and then back there, Mark's there calling. Okay, all right, any guests on Zoom? Did we ask you yet there? Here none, we'll keep going. All right. Well, a couple of announcements. We've got a big program. We've got a guest speaker. We've got lots of things to go over, but I just want to share a few things. I've got some excerpts from our Rotary Magazine. Got some thank you cards. So first off, we had a nice thank you card from the Newport High School, so we love to support them, and that's from the, supporting the IB and the Excel programs. So certainly it's not going unnoticed. We love to help out. I know Keith Nelson's trying to incorporate for the vocational or for mentor, or there's lots of things we're trying to put in place, so certainly trying to iron that out and get something going there and continue to have those kids come out as just wonderful examples, as we've got April students here. Joy talking a little bit. We got a recognition from Shelter Box. That was the thing that we approved. They showed that we had approved and sent $5,000 for the Shelter Box program. It's a nice letter. They actually, they've been giving this to Diane. They offer to do programs for clubs, so there's a possibility of Diane or it would be Laura in her year. So something to consider. There's a nice picture of where some folks have gotten help, hope, help, or some particular areas that, you know, particular need, and that coming in real handy. Part of that Shelter Box has a cooking set, so can imagine, you know, living somewhere out of your home and you don't have anything to cook with. That's just the essentials we often take for granted. So a couple of things I want to just share real quickly. I've noticed and have seen real examples of anxiety, stress, animosity, and fractures amongst our long-term relationships in our community and in our club. So I'm really kind of worried about that. There's some things that have gone on, and I want to try and get ahead of that and see, you know, if we can, and it's probably from COVID. It's probably a lot of the things that we've been under for the last two years with the stress and all the things. So, and I just try to make a call out. If there's, if there's things that are going on, direct connection, a phone call, in person, a coffee, or, you know, something like that, I think is a better approach than a quickly mail or a text or other messages. So we're part of a club that's 67 years old. We've got members here that haven't quite been here that long, but we've got some folks that have been here a long time. And, you know, the last thing we want to do is break those relationships and have those splinters in between them. And our, our club internationally is 117 years old. So again, you can think of all the relationships, all the connections. We're all here to do the same thing. We're all kind of here to do good and build goodwill and better friendship. And then while our outcomes are, you know, we're shooting for the same thing, we just may be particularly zealous about trying to incorporate how we can do it versus how it's been done, or whatever those situations are. So please, if there's something going on with you and another member or a community member or family, you know, for that matter too, there certainly are those situations that it's, you know, political, polarizing, whatever point of view you have, you know, we're trying to mend those fences. Diane and Sonya and myself will help if it's a club-related thing, and so we certainly want to extend our, you know, volunteer and incorporate some help or some reason or whatever the case. So please just consider that. If there's anything that you feel like there's a dispute or misunderstanding or lack of communication, whatever the case, so please consider that. And again, always consider, before we test, hey, is it applicable? Yes. Is it build goodwill? Yes. Is, you know, all those things, fair to all concern. Please, you know, go back to that original. And I think his name was Herb that wrote that back in the day when he was trying to build that first business, the Illumina Company back in, I think it was in Chicago. So consider that. Uh, let's see here. So more positive note, next I want to recognize a member that's reached a milestone in our club. So this particular milestone is a Paul Harris Fellowship. This particular person has worked through the ranks. This particular person has taken on tremendous challenges in our community, taken on a lot of work, and is not afraid of hard work. So I'd love to bring up Sonya Graham as far as our newest. You get there, you can put a frame in it, a nice pin to put on, a little towel there, and welcome if you want to say a word or two.
Not yet. Picture first.
Thank you very much. I'm really happy to have reached this milestone and so very happy to be a member of this club.
Well, recognition is something that can be repeated over and over, and we have folks that are plus eight and go on to higher levels. So if you're philanthropic, if you feel charitable, this is a great place to go. You can consider, you know, your estate plan, your, those other things or quests, lots of ways to help out. Just pick, so just a ton of thanks and gratitude to those folks there. So certainly, that's something we want to recognize. Another thing here, who's, anybody had any time to read their Rotary Magazine this month? Diane, we've got one hand. Any other hands out there? Anybody even seen it on their desk or at their, there's Kathy. Okay, okay, so I want to pick apart a little bit here. Of you two, is there any stories in here that you particularly, so tell me, what was the one you liked or read?
We are going to have our second Imagine Rotaract meeting on Tuesday, April 12th at 3:30. Elliot's going to come again. It was a meeting, it was an article about how to engage younger people and get them interested in Rotary. And it was a great article, and I will talk about it on April 12th at the Rotaract meeting at 3:30. So if any of you would like an invitation to that meeting, let me know. Zoe's going to join us. Sonya, Richard.
Wonderful. Thanks for sharing that. Kathy, do you have any memorable stories that you are picking apart in here recently?
I only have these images on my desk. I can't tell you that I've gotten them written.
That's okay. You get credit, so no worries. Thank you. Well, I'll share a couple of things, and it oftentimes is so on point or so pertinent to what we're going through. And so the first is the President's Page, Sheikar Mehta. So he's talking about, and he has an outgoing initiative about empowering girls. April is maternal in women's health, so we've got a baby here celebrating that. So wonderful. Joy gets to continue that 100% of attendance here, so wonderful on that. He talks a little bit about growing more and doing more, and again, it hasn't really been a big theme. We're trying and talking quite a bit about retaining folks and keeping people invested, keeping people, you know, engaged as well as the new folks, but it really is something that they've pushed on. And we're going to hear quite a bit about this, or Sonya will hear quite a bit about this at the convention in Houston. So he'll be there and he'll have a lot of sharing about how the growth's been and all the goals that have been achieved and all those things. So a lot of good speak about that. He also had an opportunity to speak at the Climate Convention, Climate Conference that happened in Glasgow, and talked to many of the world leaders. So Rotary was there, you know, they were sharing and talking about the things that are concerning. Okay, here's a trivia question real quickly. Who knows how old Paul Harris would be today? Or April 19th, actually. Anybody, anybody guess on how old Paul Harris would have been? Throw it in, throw it in, right there. Go ahead.
Real old.
Okay. Any other guesses?
121.
Close. 154. Nice cake in there, celebrating his birthday. One or two other things here. Find my little highlighters. Oh, yes. So I was talking a little bit about earlier about cooperation, collaboration, and communication. There's a couple of statistics in here about, says 86% of employers and executives attribute workplace failures to lack of collaboration and cooperation. So certainly, you know, that's a, at all levels, that's a problem. And so communicating more. I remember when I was in grade school, they gave us a little symbol. It was a keychain, and it was a key. It says, "Communication is the key." Kind of a funny thing, but I always remembered that. And certainly, it seems to be a problem or can be a problem in any term. Says 75% of employers rate teamwork and collaboration as very important, but only 18% of employees are evaluated on their communication skills and performance during performance review. So certainly something to consider is, hey, how's that going? You know, check in with that. 39% of employees say there's not enough collaboration in their organization. So certainly something everybody gets to work on. There's lots of points about how that can be addressed or increased. There's a nice thing that we're going to hear more about is the four areas of focus, impact, reach, engage, adapt. Certainly a focus going forward that Sonya will be helping to incorporate. And then there's a nice story in here about Ukraine. So I really was encouraged. And again, it seems very timely. And I know we'll have a guest speaker in just a moment, but there's really a nice particular story about Ukraine that says, "Strengthen times of crisis." So think about the Rotary Clubs over in that area, in that region, and it talks a little bit about what their fortitude is and their, you know, how their passion to stay engaged and be resilient to all those things. And then just read a couple of sentences here. It says, "Ukraine is an agricultural powerhouse in a country of significant technological strategic importance, but it has a turbulent history. The buildup of the Russian-Ukraine war that began in February preoccupied many members of Rotary around the world and those who worried about the future of Rotary within Europe's second largest country. Yet amid this turmoil, Rotary members in Ukraine continue to demonstrate resilience and unwavering commitment to peace." So I know we've heard examples of that, and this goes through a lot of stories in the timeline. So it's just a wonderful resource and just very timely. It just says, a lot of things we didn't know about such a gem of a country. So with that, I'll leave the rest of this for you to help them discover. And then next I want to bring up Raina. She's going to bring up the guest speaker, and we're going to hear from somebody. So come on up, Raina.
Well, last, last week, we had a few people asking how Katya was doing, and so I wanted to bring her today and just have her introduce herself, and if you want to share, you can, or if people have questions. But we, she's a blessing to have at the Department of Health, and so I wanted to bring her here.
Hi, everyone. My name is Katya, and I'm from the Ukraine. So now I study in Newport High School, and I'm glad that I'm here today. Thank you.
What part are you from, Ukraine?
I'm from Ternopil. That's a city in West Ukraine. Yeah.
What's the best way we can help the people in Ukraine right now?
Um. I really don't know. It's what this, the situation is awful, and I don't know what helped.
Do you get to talk to your family?
Um, yes, I every day speak with my family from Ukraine. I have many relatives in Ukraine, like my grandma. She stays in Ternopil, in my city where I born. So yeah, I speak with she every day. And I have many cousins in Ukraine.
I have noticed so many Ukrainians speak very good English. At what point did you start to study English? And is it an ongoing setting for most Ukrainians?
I don't say that I speak English very good, because I study English in school in Ukraine, because in Ukraine, everyone starts to study English from first grade. So yeah, you study English from first to 11th grade. Yeah, but it's hard to speak because we don't practice. We study only words, like we read some texts in English, but we don't practice, so speak is hard. But I, I mostly understand what people say, but I speak like, not so good.
Speak very well.
Thank you so much.
That's wonderful. Thanks, Raina, for bringing Katya and just, you know, at some point, I think that they were offering, maybe have a little program or have a little bit more, and if she gets more comfortable, we'd love to hear more about that. The different exchange students we've had, and I think they made, one of them made waffles or made crepes or something, right? Yeah, so, you know, I think there was cheesecakes or there was other things made, so certainly looking forward to those things. All right, how about next up? Oh, any other announcements from the group? Anything on Zoom or anybody in the room that wants to share anything quickly? No Zoom, okay, no problem. Okay, so next we're going to take a minute. We're going to have a guest fill in. Major at Arms. So welcome, Major Raymond.
This is actually my first event. I've been in Rotary for many, many years. I've transplanted from place to place where I get stationed, but I've never been asked to do this particular part of Rotary, which is weird because it's Major Sergeant Arms, so. Before I have my little agenda here, I got a little thing here. We've got some birthdays to look at here real briefly. Marissa, is she here or is she online? Marissa, are you online? You had a birthday. Is she online?
We see her picture there.
Is she there?
Yep, I'm here.
All right. Birthday, uh, when was it? When was your birthday?
It was very good.
Oh, when was it?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. And what did you, what did you do?
Uh, took the day off, really.
Took the day off?
Nothing, nothing, very impressive.
Oh, it was nice weather out there yesterday as well, so.
That's true.
Would you like to, you know, donate to the COTTS, you two Rotary today?
Sure, I will be $50 happy.
Wow, 50. I'm a nonprofit judge, so I go down low. So we also have another birthday right here today. I don't know if John Baker is here. Is John here or online? I still don't know everybody yet, so.
Don't see him.
Don't see him. I can't see right here because of this little thing, so. I gotta turn on my light here. Here we go. We have a partner birthday. Susan. Susan Van Lu. Is Susan here or online? No? Okay, well, we'll get her next time. We've got some member anniversaries. Is Douglas Hunt here?
No.
No. Jim. Jim. Jim Graham. Did you get picked on last week? I can't remember on this.
I did get picked on last week.
But it happened last Friday after our Rotary meeting, so I thought I would come over for this meeting. So I think you're going to get maybe double fine here.
Well, I already.
Maybe not, maybe not.
I did get fined last week.
Yeah, okay.
I do want to take this opportunity as a, a former Swami to put five bucks to each of the three Coast Guardsmen for the 50-50 rap. So they're on there as Coast Guard one, two, three, and I got 50 bucks to the, to the Coast Guard rap.
Paul S. Is Paul S. here? I can't pronounce his last name. You haven't said your last name.
Steadable.
Yeah, someone's, we got, I was wrong. I asked some other people. They were close. You had an anniversary of sorts. Do you know what it was?
Well, I got an email this morning from my father-in-law, and it's our wedding anniversary. We kind of forgot about it.
When is it? When was your wedding anniversary?
Uh, today.
Oh, it's today! It's today! I'm surprised to see you here. Okay. How much is that going to cost you for forgetting and then also being here without your spouse?
I, I didn't try to drag my spouse here, but she has pages she has to prove through the papers. So I would say I'm 25 dollars happy because I'm not really one who forgot our anniversary. We do remember the anniversary of when we backed, which is February 9th.
Okay.
And we celebrate that.
So it's 25.
The anniversary is when we got healthcare together.
So the second part to this is how many years?
Uh, well, we had to actually look at the poster of our wedding to figure that out. We're going to have to count, but it's nine years.
Wow, 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 wow. Someone needs to update this list because it says eight years. Is it really nine or eight? What is it?
It, it's nine.
It's nine. Okay, I'm going to go with you. Nine years. Congratulations. Give him a hand. Now, we have some scary money that hit the newspaper a couple of weeks ago. Can you show that first photo for me? I like to do little photos from time to time when I stand up and speak. I do this at church on Sundays as well, so people don't fall asleep in church. So this is what the money looks like that is floating around out there. I don't know if you had a chance to see it just yet. It kind of looks like real money, doesn't it? Even says on there, "Movie purpose only on that bottom half." But I found one the other day. I was appalled by seeing it. Can you get that second slide for me? I want this person to explain this. Can you explain this? Why is your face on that money, President?
Yeah, I feel very presidential.
What's going on here? Why is your money floating around in this community?
It's a nice thing to do.
You know, our stocks and our mutual funds are going lower in recent days. Now I know where the money's going. I think somebody should pay a fine for that today.
I think it was $20.
$20. Give him a hand for that one. One more slide there, real quickly. It's the tulip festival season here, and the best time to go is, I'm told, is mid-April, right? And we got some people here online here today, so I'm going to kind of pick on them a little bit because they always get a pass a little bit, right? Because they're not here with us. So can you just show the people that are online? I'm going to ask maybe one or two, a question or two real quick before we move on, because I know we got our special speakers here. But does anybody online would like to share with me, how many acres of tulips are there at the Woodburn Shoe Farm? Does anybody want to guess online for me? Raise your hand and we'll, someone tell me who's raising their hand. Who's raising their hand? Can you see that? No hands yet? I don't have to call somebody. I have to go to the screen? Great. I don't see names.
Signy should know.
Signy? Okay. Someone called out Signy. Signy, can you help me out here? How many acres? You can Google it real quick if you need to, because that's what I do. How many acres of tulips are there? Is she on mute?
I wonder if she just missed the bell.
That's on the box, too.
Oh, oh, okay, listen to the comment box. Like, I can't hear anybody. I'm just trying to engage these onlineers, you know. They always get a free pass. Okay, what do we have? Do we have anything on the comment box?
Loa said 200 acres.
Well, that's, well, there's 200 acres of outdoor space, but not of tulips. So how many acres of tulips? So she pays five bucks for getting it wrong, so. 1,500 acres of tulips? Well, according to the website I saw, it's 40 acres, 40 score acres of tulips. Now, how many variety of tulips are there at the Woodburn Shoe Farm? Does anybody know? Variety. Online? I see it's dwindling because I'm picking on them. No? All right. Loa, are you on there, Loa? I see your picture. I'm picking on you because you're not here. I'm sorry. Loa, do you know the answer to that second question? How many variety of tulips are there at the Tulip Shoe Farm in Woodburn?
I'm going to guess that they have probably less than one per acre, so let's say 20 for their 40 acres of tulips.
Variety. Well, you're close. Just need to times it by four. Two, four, six, eight, four, yes. There's 80 varieties of tulips on the farm. So that's what I'm going to cost you, $2 because you're my friend. All right, last but not least, duck fans. I'm a duck fan. Any duck fans here? Come on. Now, someone needs to tell me, what is going on with the women's basketball team? Five transfers now of the women's basketball team after the end of the season. What's going on? Someone want to comment on that or give their intuition why that's happening? We probably all know why, but I'm just curious if any true duck fans know why. Maybe they know the coach. Nobody know? No one wants to comment on it? Are you afraid to comment on it because I might find you? No, I won't find anybody on this one. Go ahead.
I don't want to talk about the ducks, but the Lady Twos in basketball are doing darn good.
I knew it. Well, because you said that, it's five bucks. Five dollars. Oh, go ahead.
Well, I can't resist. The Jackrabbits, who some may know or may not know. I'm a South Dakota native, and our Jackrabbits just won the women's NIT.
Wow, congratulations. That's a nonprofit rate that I give when I'm up here. See, it's pretty cheap. Any others? I think why the women are leaving because they don't get playing time. They want playing time. They don't get it. They go somewhere else. Choose you what it is. They have a good team. They'll have a good team next year, too. Was that? That's a good question. They're still floating in the transfer pool somewhere out there, right? That's a Beaver fan saying that back there, by the way. So I recognize that. That's $5 for you two. No, 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 I'm not doing it. He's my friend. I live across the street from them. I want to be on speaking terms. Okay, that is it. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for filling in, Major Raymond, for our Sergeant in Arms Bob. We miss Bob and hope he gets, everything's going well and gets back here. I know he's busy with that, so good on that. Okay, next up. Oh, we haven't done our historical minute. Diane, were you doing a historical minute? Sorry.
Do we have time?
Yes, why don't you do it real quickly, then we'll, we'll save a few minutes here for the wonderful presentation.
Today, can you hear me okay? Today I would like to talk about the Rotary Wheel, and Jonathan put it up. It has been the symbol of Rotary since our earliest days. The first design was made in 1905 by Chicago Rotarian Montague Bear, an engraver who drew a simple wagon wheel with a few lines to show dust in motion. The wheel was said to illustrate civilization movement and service work in action. Most of the early clubs had some form of wagon wheel on their publications and letterhead. In 1922, it was decided that all Rotary Clubs should adopt a single design as the exclusive emblem of Rotarians. So the present gear wheel with 24 teeth and six spokes was adopted by the Rotary International Association. The gear teeth around the outside represent the fact that the work is, that work is to be done. The gear teeth around the outside represent the fact that the work is to be done, always work to be done. The six spokes represent the interdirection and path of our vocational service throughout the representation of our membership via the classification system. Similarly, these same spokes represent an outward distribution path of Rotary ideals of service and the four-way test, going out towards the community vocations and businesses that our members represent. A group of engineers advised that the geared wheel was mechanically unsound and would not work without a keyway in the center of the gear to attach it to a power shaft. So in 1923, the keyway was added to signify the wheel was a worker and not an idler. Always work to be done. The keyway in the center of the hub is of great significance because it represents the individual Rotarian member who is the key factor in every club, and I believe Richard said that today. We are, all of us, key factors. Quality members are the keys needed for the hub to engage with the shaft and turn, putting the energy into motion and creating the power for the gears to do their work. At the 1929 Rotary International Convention, it was determined that blue and gold would be the official colors of the organization, so the wheel was designed with these colors. The four blue bands within the outer radius of the gear represent our four avenues of service, and I think we have more of that now, but that's okay. We have seven, I believe. The design, which we now know, was formally adopted as the official Rotary International emblem. The six spokes could also be considered to represent the six focus areas for service projects approved and funded by Rotary Foundation and Global Grants. Basic education and literacy, disease and prevention and treatment. Three is economic, community, and development. Number four is maternal and child health. Number five is peace and conflict prevention and resolution. Number six is providing clean water, sanitation, and hygiene, and I think now we have number seven, which is the environment. Thank you, Richard.
Diane, I know it's important, and I certainly appreciate that, just like that. We're gonna have to add another spoke and maybe a few more COGS in the wheel there. Okay, so I talked to these guys earlier, and I said I'm gonna give them enough time, so you guys can't leave. You gotta get an important message. We really value it. So I want to bring Mark Moran up and introduce our program. So welcome, Mark.
The United States Coast Guard has been an integral member of this community for probably 100 years or so, been around for a long time. We've got three members here that are gonna share some of their experiences and give us a kind of an update of the station, Uqun Bay. First, we've got the most-to-mate third class Travis Madrid. He comes from Florida. Most-to-mate second class Cory Zarambi from California. And then in the back, who's watching over everything, is most-to-mate first class Ray Aguilar.
Hello, everybody. My name is Petty Officer Travis Madrid, and this is Petty Officer Cory Zarambi. We're gonna do just a little presentation, be a little slideshow, kind of give you an update on what's going on in Station Uqun Bay, what we've been up to, what's on the horizon. If you have any questions, we'll do our best to answer those. So that's Station Uqun Bay. Still has the 36-foot outside. What we have coming up, I don't think we have a slide for it, but... So I'll just give you a little overview of the station itself. If you haven't seen it, three motorized boats. We have one response boat, small, it's a 29-foot, and then we have 46 active-duty members and nine reserve members currently. Oh, yeah, we just actually had a pretty fun morale ski trip. So every year, we try to do like a morale bet for the members, just to, you know, keep spirits high. So they just got back from a unit morale trip not too long ago. And then this, we've done so far since January 1st, 26 search and rescue cases. And last month was Women's History Month, and we have some slides that we'll show you to exemplify the women at our station. So these are some things that are coming up. We have something called standard inspection, which is actually the end of this month. So that's basically where the crew will come in, and it's an outside crew, and they'll come in and pretty much check all of our boats, make sure they're up to standards, make sure all the boat drivers like myself and all the BMs are capable of doing the drills that they ask us to do. And it's basically just to do a whole inspection of the unit itself and make sure that we're doing well as a unit. A big change that we have coming up in June, I believe, is we have a change of command. So that's gonna be something that's exciting, because it's gonna be the first for Station Uqun Bay, at least, first female commanding officer. So we're all excited for that. And then we have transfer season, so that's something that is all stations go through. It's basically when the bullets or the time of service for our members is up, so it's time for them to transfer to new units. So that can sometimes be a struggle. You'll see in the next couple slides, we have to do a lot of training to get new members to fill those spots, and then we have to train them to be fully qualified and fully operational for the ones we are. So here's some photos you have there on that, that's on the 47, doing two-boat training. Looks like you're passing over a heat line.
I just... Need to have the next slide.
Oh, sorry. And that right there, that's BM2 Kelsey Dozier. She's actually one of the surfmen at our unit. Surfman is one of the qualified COGSs that can drive in the surf conditions that you see in our practicing, usually on South Beach. So it's a... She's a very vital member of our crew. And we have seven active-duty women at Station Uqun Bay. We have Chief Allen, who she works as our culinary specialist. And then we have BM2 Dozier, like I said, and BM3 Robbins. MK is machinery technician, so she's in charge of all the, anything down below deck, so all the machinery, make sure everything is operating properly, parameters. And then BM3 Fulmer, BM3 Davis, and then Seemie Bulo, Seemie White, and Seemie Cruz, which we're all very grateful to have at the station, and we celebrated them on our Facebook page last month for Women's History Month. And then, yeah, in active-duty training. That first one is Seemie Cruz. She's a really good member of Deck Department, and she's getting ahead of her qualifications, ahead of schedule, so she's doing awesome. And then, is it Bulo?
That's...
Oh, it's Winter. No, no, in the middle. Oh, yeah, that's Bulo. And that is Seemie Bulo, down in the entry room. And to the right is BM2 Kelsey Dozier. I told you, she's a surfer, female surfer. So you might have seen this a couple of weeks ago, I believe, now, where we do power training. We have to make sure that all the new members are familiar with all the power that we keep on our vests so we're underway if we were to find ourselves in a situation, possibly in the water, or we needed to get attention. We have power on our vests, so that's what this picture is of. Yep, some more pictures of just the... That's actually the day end of one of our flares. That would be more something you'd see during the day, but we're just doing them at night. Helo operations. We had a question about helo ops. We were doing it yesterday. We actually will be doing it tonight as well. But this is where we train with the air facility here, and it's just to get crews trained and ready for any mission that we might need that involves a helo, which we utilize each other very often for any case. Here's a photo of them lowering down the rescue swimmer. And once they're onboard, they'll unclip and then wait for further tasks. Sometimes they jump off the boat into the water to do their own swimmer training, or they'll get horses back up. This is some more two-boat training that we try to do at night, because usually the majority of the cases we get are at night, so that always brings a different element rather than the day training, so it's always good to get underway at night. Some more photos of us doing training with the two-boat. It looks like the 29 on that left picture. And then to the right, that can you see in the water, we have a dewarmer pump that we keep on our motorized boats. And if we always practice, if a vessel was taking on water, we could pass the pump, and then the other boat would be able to take it on theirs. So this is a recent search and rescue case. This vessel was... DNW, it's been in the water. But it's a vessel that may not have propulsion and could potentially cause a worse than situation, so we usually go out and tow them to safety and then put them in the side tow, which is what we see here.
Did you charge by the mile on that?
And this picture here is actually, I believe it was the Miss Raven. They were having a little propulsion issues at first, so once they were towing them to South Beach Marina, as soon as they were getting toward the pier, they noticed that they were taking on water as well. So they had to pass over the pump and actually dewarmer that vessel. Here's some photos of the ski trip, the morale ski trip. I didn't get to go personally, but I heard nothing but great things during that trip. Oh, and so the three, as I said at the beginning, we have the three motorized boats. We usually have the two, which are the 66 and 68, and now we have a sled boat, which is basically somewhat like a prototype boat that the Coast Guard is potentially gonna give to the rest of the fleet, and we are fortunate enough ourselves, the Cape Disponable, and on the East Coast, Oregon Light are the three units that have these boats now. So it's a really awesome experience to be like one of the first crew members to be on this boat that could potentially be in the entire Coast Guard. There is some, it's a really great asset, so it's always learning curves, because we come across things that on this boat we might come across on our normal assets that we're used to. But overall, we're all really excited just to train on a new asset. Here's some photos of us doing some surf training. Yeah, my photo is actually that, what I was just discussing, the sled boat, the 40, and doing some surf training. And that's basically what we're up to, what we've been up to. Anyone have any questions?
I want to know what the difference between auxiliary and the regular Coast Guard is, because you said we have so many auxiliary members that are associated with the station.
Was it the, oh, the reserve that we had there?
The reserve.
Oh, sorry. So the reserves are, they're not active-duty, so they have careers outside of the military, so they have their own career, whether it be like police officer or anything, basically. And every month, they'll come in, once a month usually, and do like, they'll have one weekend a month, and they'll be part of the unit and be on orders, and they'll train with us. They take over certain cases for us. They do anything that we do just for that one weekend, and then two weeks out of the year, they'll be here for a two-week span, and they'll...
And then what's the difference between that? Because I know Mark is a member of the auxiliary.
So it's 30.
Mark Moran, so how's that different?
So the auxiliary, they're more like a volunteer portion of the Coast Guard. They will a lot of times conduct safety inspections for us at the pier. They're a little bit more on the on-call kind of asset that we can utilize, especially on these smaller marinas. They can go down there and conduct these vessel inspections, make sure your boat's safe before you get out there. And they do voter safety education as well.
Do you guys have to take medication for going out on water, or...
It's highly recommended if you do get motion sickness to take Dramamine or some sort of anti-motion sickness medication. For sure, there are certain members that get seasick pretty easily, and they know if they're about to get underway that they're gonna have to take some Dramamine or something.
What do you train at night?
So we train for just about anything at night, whether it be towing vessels, helicopter operations, you know, boats taking on water, flare trainings. We do search patterns, so we'll search for people in the water at night. We have dummies that we can put in the water and let them drift away, and we'll try and locate them using the elements. Yes, sir?
Do you have any special equipment for finding people in the water, like this person that we just lost here the last couple of weeks? Does a chopper or anything have special equipment to be able to find something in the water versus a visual?
So the helicopter has more equipment, especially with like FLIR, fore-looking infrared, and just having the overall outlook of the area, so they have a better, a higher vantage point than us on the boat. As far as us on the boat, we typically use our training and experience and search lights to try and locate that person based off their last position and what the weather's doing.
Do a lot of them have the EDRBs in the water? Is that a common thing on, I know it is on land, but is it in the water, too?
Yes. If you're in commercial, it's a requirement. Not a lot of recreational people carry emergency position beacons, but it's definitely highly recommended if you're gonna be out on the water to have one with you. Yeah, there's also what's called digital selective calling. It uses your radio. If you see on the lower portion of your radio, there's a red button that says distress on it. And what that does is essentially sends a distress signal to our communications room, and it'll ping your position and tell us about your vessel and where you're located.
Any other questions, please, gentlemen?
I just want to say that everybody here and every in the community recognizes what a valuable partner you are in the community. I just want to thank all the service.
Thank you, guys, for that. We also, at Station Uqun Bay, would also like to send our gratitude and thanks to the Rotary Club. There's been occasions that we've asked the Rotary Club to help us host our Christmas and dinner parties, and you guys have been more than gracious enough to help us out during those events. So we'd like to also say thank you to the Rotary Club as well. Thank you, guys.
Do you have a photo of the one, Becker?
Yes.
All right. All right, gentlemen. I'm gonna give you a thank you card to take, and it actually has your... What we do, one of the big key things we do with Rotary is we're trying to eradicate polio. So in your three names, we're gonna pay the cost to cover, to make some children against polio. So it's something we're doing. There's only two countries, Afghanistan and Pakistan, that have wild polio lab, so we're really close. That's been a focus. Plus, we help out COVID, help out wars, help out all of the other places, so thank you, guys, for your support.
Thank you.
Our secretary is born in the Big Wheel of Money. Thank you, President Richard. We have $30.64 for 47% organic, adding the makeups for 39 of 64 for 61%. And BM3, I've gotta give you some career advice. It's the hairstyle. All you gotta do to make BM2s this time. They're pretty right, isn't it? Absolutely. And so now, for the Big Wheel 50/50, we are doing really well today. We have $165 in the pot. Again, the Coast Guardsmen are in there, and $165.82 is gonna be in the win, and let's see who the winner is. BM3, you're the winner. We need to get your information.
Okay.
Any other quick announcements? John? Yes, John?
Next week's meeting, we are at the Gottesvalley Reef Science Building, and on Tuesday, I'm gonna send out a map. It's a little tricky to get there, so I'll send out a map, where to park and all that. We have four readers that day to get you into the right spot. Also, I'm gonna send them out one more time. We have 41 people showing up, which is a really good participation. Um, also, I'm gonna send them out one more time. We have forty-one people showing up, which is a really good participation. The room's set up for thirty-five, but, uh, we'll make, we'll make groups. And then the social media winner is Gretchen Apple.
Alright. Hi, the social media winner is like share posts. There are all those things on there, and try to promote what we're doing, talk about what we're doing. We're proud of what we're doing, so we're happy with that. Okay, lastly, uh, how about David or Kathy would like to leave us out and fly away test?
Uh, joining the big forum test, we need to please say what you think.
First, is it true?
Second, is it fair at all?
Third, will it be a good will when they get rid of it?
Fourth, will it be beneficial at all to serve?
And fifth, is it mine?